It got really quiet. It got really quiet. We usually do it outside. We usually go out front. We usually do. You do. So long, man.
Howdy. Good morning. I'm going to call the meeting to order. It's nine o'clock. Burnet County Commissioners Court. I'm going to need my glasses. April 8th. There it is. 2025. We're going to go ahead and do invocation and pledges, please, if you'll join us. I appreciate it.
I'd like to invite Doug Linnley, First Baptist Church.
We all just pray together. Our Lord God, we want you to know that we love you and we appreciate all the blessings that you shower on our lives. We appreciate the Hill Country. We appreciate our community, our county, our country. And, Lord, I pray that our lives would be lived in such a way that it would honor you, it would please you, make you smile. I thank you for the men and women in this room who provide leadership for our county. Pray that you would grant them wisdom and courage as they make difficult decisions. Lord, I thank you for all the folks, the concerned citizens who care enough to be here today to express whatever input they might have on decisions made. And, Lord, I pray that we would do as your scriptures say, and that is, you know, we always, we know that there's always challenges in life and challenges in leadership and decisions. We pray that you would help us to forget what lies behind and strain toward what lies ahead as we press on towards your upward call in Christ Jesus. I pray that as we speak the truth, we would speak it with kindness and we would speak it with love, knowing that that would honor and please you. And, Jesus, it's in your name that we ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledges, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, one state, under God, one indivisible. Thank you. So I'll call, so just a brief introduction to the public comment. We have two, in this court at this, at this current time, we have two opportunities for public comment. At the beginning, it can be generally accepted as kind of a forum to discuss some item that's not on the agenda or provide a general comment about the county. It has to stick to Chapter 81, something that's within the government code's responsibility. In other words, what the Commissioners Court is authorized for, but it can be on any subject that you want to speak. And then later, as we go through the agenda items, we'll have the opportunity to comment on specific agenda items. So at this point, I'm going to open for public comment about general things not on the agenda. And in each case, speakers will be given three minutes. They'll state their name for the record, and the time will begin as soon as they begin their speaking.
My name's Patty Cope. I'm a Burnet County voter, taxpayer, interested person. I got a copy of the Hart Voting Machine Master Agreement that was executed on March 17th, and I've been looking for the election board meeting minutes. There are some statutes that need to be followed to acquire supplies to run elections, and I can't find the minutes for the election board, so I wanted to let you all know that. I'd like to find the minutes. The election board needs to convene to provide supplies for elections. It's a statute. Thank you.
Thank you. So just as a reminder to people in the, participating in the meeting, that when, when public comments are made on things not on the agenda, the Commissioners Court by law may not comment on them.
Good morning, Judge Wilson and Commissioners, Claire Nibro, Burnet County voter, taxpayer, and interested person. I am going to speak about an item on the agenda today. This past Sunday, or Sunday afternoon, I emailed Judge Wilson and all four Commissioners about the proposed Central Texas Spaceport Development Corporation, raising some questions that were not satisfactorily addressed during last week's public hearing. Only one Commissioner responded to my email with some answers. He addressed most of my questions, but did not provide any information as to why Firefly Aerospace does not appear on the list of principal property taxpayers in the 2024 Burnet County Annual Financial Report, despite Firefly having two property tax listings on the Central Appraisal District website with combined appraised property values of nearly 28 million. I don't understand why the Burnet County Commissioners Court would want to dilute its authority by establishing a shared spaceport development corporation with Williamson County. For those who aren't aware, Williamson County has already appointed four members to its Board of Directors places. Section 507.003 of the Texas Local Government Code grants counties the authority to independently form an SDC. Although the Commissioners Court, without the newly appointed Judge Wilson and probably without Commissioner Collier as well, has been considering the possibilities of an SDC with Williamson County for approximately six to eight months, the public has had only about two weeks to absorb all the ramifications of this issue. One local official approached the microphone last week and indicated he had only just learned of the county's plans to form an SDC three days before the workshop. I am calling for a second public workshop to be scheduled so that working individuals from Briggs who cannot attend a 9:00 AM workshop can have the opportunity to submit their input during an evening session. I would also like to hear feedback and debate from other local leaders regarding the pros and cons of creating a Burnet County Spaceport Development Corporation. Could we please have the opportunity to hear input from local leaders and additional Briggs residents? I kindly request that you delay today's vote and arrange a second workshop to consider the potential of a Burnet County-specific SDC. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other general public comment? Okay. So at this time, we're going to, I call Agenda Item Number Four. We're going to do a proclamation acknowledging April as Child Abuse Awareness Month. We have a proclamation that's been, I believe, published out already on the website, and then we have some members of the public that are here to support that endeavor. And so I'll go ahead and, I guess I need a motion first if we're going to do this as a resolution, so.
I move to approve the resolution.
Okay. All right. It's been moved and seconded, that we approve the resolution for proclaiming Burnet County Child Abuse Prevention Awareness and Awareness Month. So we're definitely for prevention, and we want people to be aware, but we want to make sure that we're against child abuse. Just, I'm not, I'm not making light of it because I've worked in that area for many years, but I just, sometimes the words get all jumbled up and, and we're, so the resolution reads as, whereas the county of Burnet prides itself on giving back to our communities, contributing to the quality of life among our citizens, and whereas the Burnet County Child Welfare Board and the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services, along with the assistance of CASA for the Highland Lakes and the Hill Country Children's Advocacy, provide assistance and services for abused and neglected children. Whereas Burnet County has an extraordinary number, extraordinary number of children who suffer from some form of abuse or neglect each year, and whereas through our, through a national effort, Burnet County community members are encouraged to join together to raise awareness for those children fallen victim to abuse and neglect throughout the month of April. And whereas this effort will give abused and neglected children in our country, county, excuse me, and from around the country, a chance for a safe and positive future. Now therefore, the Commissioners Court of Burnet County do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Burnet County Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. In this county and in so doing, we urge all citizens to join in the national effort to raise awareness and to help prevent child abuse and neglect. Is there any public comment? Howdy. Just state your name for the record.
Yes, I'm Carolyn Ragsdale with the Burnet County Child Welfare Board. We have members here today from Child Protective Services, CASA, and the Advocacy Center, all just, like you said, to bring awareness that it does exist in our county. It exists in every county. Probably 90% of the removals in our county are drug-related. So we all, we urge the public to be aware, and if they see something disturbing, say something, maybe not to the individual, but to call the hotline, 1-800-252-5400. You can remain anonymous, but call, and it can be investigated. And if there's nothing to it, then that's fine, but there is, you might possibly save a child's life. So thank you for allowing us to be here today and for reading the proclamation.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Okay. I call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those same, opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion passes. So.
They want a picture.
Yes. So what we're going to do, and I apologize for the inconvenience of anybody, we're going to take about a five-minute recess and go outside and take a picture with the Commissioners Court and our proclamation, and then we will be right back into business, so.
And we want to thank you all for everything you do.
Just join me. Thank you.
Let them introduce themselves.
Yeah. Please introduce yourself.
Danielle Cummings. I've been with you all for almost three years. Shift lead, TTO, and training coordinator. And I really do appreciate you all acknowledging it, so thank you.
Bridget Bristow. I'm a probationary telecommunications officer. I've been here for just shy of two months, so getting into it. Thank you all for everything you do.
Just join me. Thank you.
Will you still be able to read the proclamation?
I think so. Yes, I'm going to read it right now. Wait, is this it? Okay. All right. So proclamation honoring National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 13th through 19th, 2025, whereas emergencies can arise at any time necessitating the response of police, fire, and emergency medical services. And whereas the swift action of police officers, firefighters, and paramedic, paramedics during emergencies is crucial to protecting lives and preserving property. And whereas the, the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics relies on the accuracy and quality of information provided by, by citizens who contact the Burnet County Sheriff's Office, Burnet County Emergency Communications Center. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators serve as the first and most critical point of contact for citizens seeking emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators play an essential role in supporting our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activity via radio, providing vital information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators at the Burnet County Sheriff's Office, Burnet County Emergency Communications Center have made significant contributions to the apprehension of criminals, the suppression of fires, and the treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has consistently demonstrated compassion, understanding, and professionalism throughout their duties in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Burnet County hereby declares the week of April 13th through April 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Burnet County, in recognition of the outstanding employees of Burnet County Emergency Communications who diligently and professionally ensure the safety of our community and our citizens. Thank you very much. Thank you. Sorry, that was too close to the mic, wasn't it? I won't do that again. Do we need to get a picture up here? Thank you. We appreciate it. I'll take a recess at 9:21 for about a minute and a half.
Billy Everett told.
Wow. Come on up. I think you would help that. Let's squeeze together a little bit.
Just get a little tighter there.
Okay.
One, two, three.
Now look here. One, two, three.
Appreciate it. We'll file it. Thank you. Okay, 9:21. I call the meeting back to order. Thank you for your patience, everybody. You know, I tell you, I know they're leaving, but the, just having traveled in jails all over this state, I am just amazed at how these people sit there and respond to dozens and dozens of calls simultaneously. It's just, you know, Alan says it's a thankless job, but I always thanked them because no matter where I was in the state, it was just amazing the kind of work that they do. I never, I just, I knew one thing in life, I was never going to be a dispatcher. Just guaranteed. See, squirrel? That's about how long my attention lasts, so. All right, number five, no, I'm sorry, six. Presentation by Marble Falls Independent School District Superintendent Dr. Jeff Gassaway regarding the upcoming Marble Falls ISD bond election, provided as a courtesy to Burnet County. Discussion and questions may follow.
Thank you all for the opportunity. I really appreciate, appreciate the chance to address and talk about our bond coming up on the May ballot, and so I'm going to try to go as quickly as possible.
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Sorry. Jeff Gassaway, Superintendent Marble Falls ISD.
I know I read it. It's just.
Thank you. Our bond is on January 31st, Marble Falls Independent School District Board of Trustees called $172.2 million bond. That's going to be on four different propositions. I'm going to try to hit on all of those as we go. It's focused on facility upgrades, safety and security, traffic improvements, and then classroom extracurricular upgrades. I'll start with, if you want to learn more about it, you can go to our website, www.loveandinspire.com. Where do we get loveandinspire.com? Well, we got that from, our vision statement is Marble Falls ISD has an unyielding commitment to love every child and inspire them to achieve their fullest potential. Love and Inspire, and that's where you can find more information about the bond. My clicker may be, there we go. So this is, for those who are in the room who remember this, I'm looking at one who probably does, this was the original Marble Falls ISD Elementary, Middle School, and High School. It is now Falls on the Colorado Museum. Darlene Ostemeyer runs a great museum there. In 1978, it became the Administration Building. 2009, it moved to what's, where it resides now, and it's the, it, this is Falls on the Colorado Museum. What we are now is a district of seven different campuses. We have approximately 4,000 students. We've had a variety of success in fine arts, athletics, our career technology education programs. If I use the phrase CTE, that is going to be career technology education, and you're going to hear me use the phrase CTE a couple of times as we go. One of the things that I did is I got to address the Commissioners Court back in the fall, and one of the very first things that I noticed on social media is there's confusion about what we're on the ballot for. In the fall, we were on the ballot related to what's known as a VADER, a voter-approved tax rate election. It would have helped on the maintenance and operation side, and so when taxes are collected by, are paid by businesses and citizens, we get two bucks of money. Maintenance and operation helps us on our salaries, programs, fuel costs, all the supplies in classrooms. It would have increased the tax rate 2.67 pennies. That didn't pass, and so you may have seen an article last week about Marble Falls ISD cutting 2.4 million dollars in positions, and that's on the maintenance and operations side. The bond is addressing the interest and sinking side, that debt service side, and it's for capital projects, building renovations, infrastructure improvements, one-time expenses. And so again, those two bucks of money, just to hit on it one more time, M&amp;O goes towards salary, utilities, supplies, fuel, INS, new construction, renovation, if we were buying land. You can't use INS funds to pay for M&amp;O, and so last week... million in deficit on the M&amp;O side because they're two buckets of money. How did we get there? We had a committee of 60 people that came together, they came together five months, six different times, and they were provided a variety of different information. We looked at campus conditions, just the age of some of our campuses. Safety and security is always something that every school district's going to look at when they're talking about a bond, a potential bond issue. Modernization, just to meet the current standards, and then some of our programs growing. We did a facility condition assessment through an outside group that really focused on our aging facilities, safety and security, and compliance, and some of the things that they hit on in their, in their report is just upgrades to our entry points as parents and visitors come in, some emergency system upgrades, safety and security, academic spaces for students, just modernizing those spaces, our facilities, just like if you had 1,000 kids come through your home every single year, your needs are going to change every so often. And so, looking at just the five-year needs that will be at all of our campuses. ADA compliance is one of the area bringing things up to code, and then technology is always changing, making sure that we're addressing technology needs. So, we did campus tours with groups. We focused on career technology during those times, career technology education, and just 92% to 95% of our students are enrolled in at least one or more CTE class. I'll talk about one of those in a minute when we get to that. Fine art improvements and athletic, just looking at our fine art and athletic spaces, performance areas, visual art programs, looking at upgrading there. And so, what is a bond election? It's when we go to taxpayers and ask permission to borrow bonds, get a loan that's going to be for, similar to a home improvement loan on what it will finance, construction, renovation, capital projects, but we have to go to the voters. We don't get to just make those decisions on our own, even though the one thing that you're going to hear me say multiple times is this is not going to increase the tax rate a penny. Our INS tax rate's 2153. I'll show you that in a minute, but this will, whether all four propositions pass or fail, 2153 will not change. And the reason that we have that kind of capacity is our tax base is growing. Y'all know that. We're building new homes in the Marble Falls ISD area. We're having new businesses come into the area. The other thing is that we've been able to pay down our debt on previous bonds. We've saved $10 million on interest, and that's why we can talk about $172.2 million with no increase to the INS tax rate. So, who decided what was on the bond? That community advisory came together, they made a recommendation, the Board of Trustees tweaked that just a little bit, and then January 31st, they unanimously approved that recommendation. So, the last bond we had was in 2018. It was $55 million, and some of y'all probably know this just because you deal with construction costs. That $55 million bond today would be $90 million. That's how much, especially during the COVID years, that construction has escalated. I will say that the projects came in under budget, and we were able to take 4.5 million in savings and do other things with some projects that were not on the original list. We were able to address even more than what we said we were going to do. The bond is going to be divided into four propositions, and I'm going to go through those very quickly. The reason that they're divided into four, in 2019, a law was passed that basically said that certain things have to be on separate propositions, and so we, on 2018, it was one proposition. So, this will be over four. Prop A is general facilities, modernization, safety, security. It's $131.4 million. Prop B is technology upgrades, 2.2. Prop C is athletic facility improvements, $12.5 million, and then multipurpose facilities, $26 million, all for a total of $172.2 million at zero increase to the current tax rate. So, that's the big long list, and I'm going to hit on all those in the next few slides, so I'm not going to Terry. Renovation of district-wide facilities, this is just the HVAC units, the tile, the carpet, the paint on the walls, the wiring for electrical and safety and security systems. District-wide safety and security, we're looking at just some of the things that we're looking at is, do we go to every door being on some sort of FOB system? Do we have one key that works on every door to make sure that if a police officer or one of our Burnett County Sheriff's Office needs entry into one of our facilities, any classroom, that they're not worried about what key it is, that they have the ability to get in quickly? Digital marquees, I know all of our campuses no longer have spring break, that was a couple of weeks ago, but every now and then you might see a school that have, you know, on the ones where PTOs go out there and do one letter at a time, you might see something that's two weeks old, and this would have digital marquees to make sure our parents and students see up-to-date information. Energy efficiencies, looking at things like solar panels, LED lighting, trying to save money on that maintenance and operations side, and then district-wide technology infrastructure. This is everything but devices, and I'll talk about devices in Prop B, but this is projectors, televisions, it's the wiring that runs our technology, the Wi-Fi hotspots, the towers in our technology building. More on Prop A, replacing our buses, any aging buses and aging maintenance vehicles, just like your car has a lifespan, a bus has about a 20-year lifespan, and getting those replaced, having dollars to replace those. I'm going to hit on the bottom two, and then I'll hit on the top two on next slides. Elementary school playgrounds, every elementary will get a brand-new ADA-accessible playground and additional help with fall space, growth-based elementary expansion. This is allocating dollars that if we were to grow at one of our elementaries and needed to add one, that the dollars are allocated, that we could do that, but we don't have to if the growth were not there. On the next one, if it will click, is Spice Wood Elementary, and so if you were to be at Spice Wood, especially the first day of school or any bad weather days, it goes, the traffic goes all the way out to 191 and starts blocking traffic out there and becomes a safety issue for our students and parents, and so this would be increasing our parent drop-off space by adding more footage to the drop-off as well as adding parking spaces out there as that campus may grow. Same thing at Highland Lakes, and this is, it goes, traffic during the first few months of school go all the way out to 1431, and actually Granite Shoals PD has to have officers there for at least the first two to three weeks of school to try to help with traffic, and this will get our parents and students off that. The next one is going to be high school career technology education. This is building three classrooms. I mentioned, I was going to say something about this. We have so many kids interested in our welding program that right now, for every welding bay we have, we have two students interested in welding, which means we're either having a kid weld every other day, or they get to weld half of the class while another classmate welds the other half of the class. This would be adding space where every kid could weld every single day. It would also add a floral design classroom and all the coolers that would go with that, and then finally, one additional classroom that will be big enough where you can have a lab space that could be used for something like our aerospace engineering or other growing District-wide programmatic enhancements, curricular supports, this is going to be things like elementary science, math, elementary PE, music, art programs, having some dollars, library books to be able to allocate to help those areas and get the things that they need for the classrooms. High school dance and cheer facility, they would be moving, renovating our current band hall, which would become the high school dance and cheer facility. That space is big enough that it's basically the size of a gymnasium, the floor of a gym, and that would give them a lot more space to be able to address their needs, and cheerleading gets moved around, and so this would have a dedicated space with changing rooms there. High school auditorium renovation, if you go to see any of our plays, I hope you do. If you haven't come, we have great music programs, fine arts, but this would be renovating the auditorium. It is all original 1988, and it's starting to show its age, especially the bathrooms in the front lobby. High school band hall expansion, this would be moving our band hall from its current location into a PE gym, renovating that space as well as adding 8,000 square feet. That will have practice spaces, ensemble spaces, and office spaces for the band program. That was Prop A, $131.4 million. Prop B is very simple. Just think about every single student and staff have a device, either an iPad or Chromebook. With our students, every staff has a laptop, and as those devices expire, this will have $2.2 million allocated, that if we need to buy new devices, that the dollars will be there to do that. Prop C is athletics, $12.5 million. High school softball, artificial turf. Some of the reasoning behind the turf on the first and last bullet, some of the reasoning behind that that the committee heard about is just every time it rains, which I love the rain, I hope it will rain more, but when it does, you lose practice time and you lose potential game time, as well as we're living in a day and time where water conservation is something that that committee brought up, and so replacing the turf with something that the committee felt strongly about. Mustang Stadium turf replacement, this will be having the dollars allocated. In 2019, we actually replaced the turf, but the lifespan of football turf is going to be about eight to nine years, and so we'll have the dollars allocated 2027, 2028 if we need to replace that stadium turf, the dollars are allocated for that. Relocation to high school baseball with turf, I already talked about the turf. I'll talk about the why when we get to Prop D, but it would be building a new baseball field that will have turf on it. Two other projects, Mustang Stadium scoreboard, this will be removing the old scoreboard and having a new digital scoreboard, like the television we're looking at right now. Our CTE AV students, audiovisual students, would be able to do things like videos, commercials, advertising from our business department, instant replay potential as we get better at that. They would be using the same system that is used in Big League, you know, NFL, college football facilities. Max Copeland Gym Locker Room addition, our athletic programs are growing, and so this would be building a new girls' and boys' locker room in the Max Copeland Gym. Connect. So, that's Prop C, that was $12.5 million. And then Prop D is a multipurpose facility. A multipurpose facility is an indoor turfed facility. It will be 60 yards plus a 10-yard end zone, five yards on the edges. It will have three lanes of track that will be on the side. It can be used for a variety of different programs. First of all, the one that comes to mind is athletics, but then the one that was, we were talking to other school districts, one of the biggest programs that use it in the fall is banned because they usually don't practice till after school. Due to the UIL and specifics on heat, and when you can go outside or not, a lot of the school districts we visited with said that their band uses it a lot. Some other programs, PE cheerleaders, drill team can use those. May is a time when our elementaries have their field days. I've heard districts using their multipurpose facility for elementary field days to make sure those happen on the day that the parents are taken off work to go to a field day. It will have a new weight room attached to it, as well as a new auxiliary gym for volleyballing and basketball. I talked about the law changed in 2019. One of the other things that changed is that it will end with, the ballot language will say this is a property tax increase, and I've said, and I'm going to say probably two or three more times before we finish, that the MFISD current tax rate will not increase by the proposed 2025 bond propositions. That 2153 will stay 2153 whether all four pass or they fail. We're adding debt, and so the longevity of what we're paying off will be longer, but we're not increasing that tax rate. This is a nice picture of Marble Falls. It gets me to say that one more time, that it will not be a tax increase. There's that 2153. This is a reminder for me to talk about that one of the things I didn't mention is that we pay $14 million in Robin Hood recapture, so as we collect taxes, we're sending $14 million from Marble Falls ISD back to the state, and that's on the maintenance and operations side. The $172.2 million on the interest and sinking side, that INS, not a dollar is subject to recapture, so all $172.2 million will stay in Marble Falls ISD. Our tax rate is lowered since, by 30% over the last 10 years, it was $1.28. It's now 89 cents, and that's rounding it up. You'll see the exact amount on the next slide. It's 67 cents on the M&amp;O, 22 on the INS, for a total of 89 cents on every hundred dollars that a property assessed value. This is where we sit compared to a lot of districts around us. There's that 67, 25, 2153, 8878, and again, that will stay at 2153. This gives me a chance to just talk about that we do have an older community, and it gives me a chance, as I go around and present, the average age of the voters in the fall was, on day one, it was 64 years old, by the end, it was 55, and so it went down, but we do have an older community that is on fixed incomes, but whether you're 51 years old, like myself, or 65 and older, your home values, that 2153 will not increase, whether your taxes are frozen or not, it will stay the same. So, I know everybody in this room is already registered to vote. If you aren't, you missed it, that was last week, but early voting is the 22nd through 29th, and then Saturday, May 3rd, is Election Day. I started with this, and I'll finish with this, that if you want to learn more information about it, one of the best places you can go is our district website, www.loveandinspire.com. We have a frequently asked questions page, and with that, I would entertain any questions.
Are there any questions, Commissioners? I do want to restate something. You're cutting the budget this year by 2.4 million, but you're sending 14 million back to Austin.
That's exactly right. Yes, sir. Doesn't feel right. And we have 67%, 68% low SES, which means 67% to 68% of our kiddos are on free and reduced lunch. Just doesn't seem right. Y'all, thank you so much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir.
All right, that was, as I said, when I called the agenda item, that was just a courtesy because we are also a taxing authority, and so just as a courtesy for other taxing authorities to provide the information, we appreciate it. Dr. Gassaway. Okay, I'm going to call item number seven, discuss and consider and take appropriate action concerning approval of out-of-state travel for Michaela Cloud and Ebony Hunt to attend the Navigator 2025 Conference in Orlando, Florida. I believe there's a packet of information on seven, the, I believe the airline and the hotel is paid for by CAPCOG, the Capital Area Council on Government, Planning Council on Government, I believe. Capital Area Planning Council on Government. So, they're picking up the flight and the hotel, we're just paying for meals and.
Transportation.
Transportation.
While they're in Orlando.
Okay. Is there any questions, Commissioner, about this item? Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval.
All right. Been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on this issue? And just, okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. The motion passes. Okay, number eight, consider and take appropriate action regarding the request from David and Susan Onion for the waiver of their penalty fees on property ID number 5307. So, this is number eight. So, what I've done is, thank you. I have looked over with the chief appraiser that the, this, just for a little commentary, if you don't mind, just bear with me, but this is, one of the crucial things about government is in our constitutional system of government, that people get a right to redress their concerns in effective ways, and this is one of those really, it's a small amount, but it's an extremely important way that people get to redress their concerns. So, in this case, the Unions had provided where they went online prior to January 31st and submitted an online payment system. They took a screenshot, and this is one of those beautiful things, somebody thought ahead and actually took a screenshot of their submission, and it did say pending on it, in fairness, you know, to the, there wasn't anything wrong with the system, people, there were lots of potential errors, transmission errors, maybe they wrote in one wrong number on their account or routing code, but they submitted it, but they took a screenshot that they took, that they had submitted it. And then the statute gives them the opportunity that from the time that they found out, that they had 21 days to make the payment, they made, as soon as they found out, within 20 days, they made their payment, and then now they're asking for the return of the delinquent amount. The taxes are still there, they paid their taxes, several thousand dollars, but this is the delinquency that we're all subject to if we pay late. So, in this case, I have reviewed it with the chief appraiser. It looks like that they have all, they've met the standard of the statute, and so there, it is my recommendation, after reviewing the documents, that we would return the penalty of 228. is the the delinquency that we're all subject to if we pay late. So in this case, I have reviewed it with the chief appraiser, it looks like that they have all, they've met the standard of the statute, and so they're, it is my recommendation, after reviewing the documents, that we would return the penalty of $228.55 delinquent paid to the, the delinquent fees paid into the Burnett County General Fund, and $33.27 to the Burnett County Road and Bridge Fund. So that is my recommendation to the court.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded by the Commissioners, is there any public comment on this issue? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion passes. Called number, item, agenda item number eight, I mean, excuse me, nine, excuse me, discuss and consider and take appropriate action regarding the approval of, to utilize technology funds for upgrading the equipment in the South Annex courtroom. And so, this is, apparently, the, in the South Annex, down in Marble Falls, the equipment quit working, and we've got, it's been, as I understand, Ms. Auditor, it's been solved, or has the problem been solved?
I'm not aware whether, I'm not aware whether it's been solved or not.
Okay, and this, this is the request to make, I think it's a $119 payment on this item, to go ahead and resolve the communications within the courtroom. Not sure why it's coming to us, instead of being solved through a purchase order or whatever, but...
Because it's using technology funds.
Okay.
It's a restricted account.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, there we go, a restricted account for technology funds, so is there any, I recommend that we approve it, is there any motion on the matter?
Move for approval.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this JP Technology Funds? It doesn't specify, because how the court technology funds won't qualify.
It would have to be Justice Court Technology Funds to qualify.
This is technology funds, so I want to make sure we're specific when it's not court technology funds, it's JP Technology Funds.
Okay. Okay, so, Mr. Dockery, do you amend your motion to...
That's a friendly amendment. Friendly amendment to my motion.
Okay. And the second?
Second.
Okay, all right, so it's been moved and seconded that we approved this as court technology funds? And then, is there any public comment? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Clerk. Number 10, discuss and consider, take appropriate action regarding the closing of the courthouse on April 11th, 2025, due to the closure around the square for the Burnett, City of Burnett Bluebonnet Festival. So I think I, at the time, when, a week or two ago, I was thinking this was going to have a much broader impact than it did, but after talking to elected officials and others, I think, I really don't need, I don't think we need to take action on this, I thought it was going to involve some, some leave, but what I'm telling staff to, all those that can work from home on this day, because they're going to close the entire square, so everybody that can work from home will work from home. There'll be, I think, some offices open, maybe, maybe part-time, part of the day to get down here, there's not going to be any parking anywhere near the area, so even, even things we might have relied on farther, farther away will be taken, so I'll encourage leave to take, I'm sorry, take staff to take leave wherever appropriate, and if they don't have sufficient leave, to contact their supervisor and let the supervisor work out some alternative method. So, I'm going to ask, with that information that we just pass on the agenda item, is that okay?
Just have one question, if I could.
Sure.
Madam Auditor, are we, will there be someone available by phone to issue POs on Friday, or...
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so we'll pass on that item, thank you for your indulgence in letting me putting that up there, but at the time, that I thought it was going to impact a lot more people in our, in our courthouse.
Can I clarify?
Sure.
The courthouse will be open, though?
I, I think the, technically, the courthouse will be open, but nobody will be able to get to it, as I understand it. The roads will be closed.
My office will be here, because we cannot work from home.
Okay.
I just want to make sure, before I tell my people to come here, that the courthouse will be open.
I will be here, most of the day, so, thank you. Okay. Everybody still good with that scenario? Okay, called item number 11, discuss and consider and take appropriate action to authorize the use of Burnett County building located at 607 North Vandevere, AgriLife Building, is often referred to, for the Works For Solution Rule Capital Area, and the opportunities for Williamson and Burnett County Head Start Program, and for the county judge to have the authority to negotiate and finalize the details of the contract. So just a brief explanation, we have this property acquired over at 607 North Vandevere, there's a couple issues, and I'm still working with the county attorney and the occupants of the, proposed occupants of the building to resolve some liability issues, the contract that they submitted requires us to have liability for any actions arising out of our negligence or whatever, whatever things that we do to the building, but I felt that they, the occupants needed some level of liability insurance, so we haven't had time before this court to finalize the amounts, and so that's, really, the contract or the use of the building really, really isn't in dispute, it's about making sure that they're carrying liability for their own actions within the building. So if, if that's acceptable, I have a sample of the contract, it's, I think, pretty well filled out, but does not have the liability amounts that we would require of them, I would recommend approval. So then, once you do that, you'll bring it back to the next court? Well, I'm recommending that we go ahead and approve the use in the contract, and then allow me to work out the final issue of liability.
And the agenda item states that the county judge had the authority to negotiate and finalize the details of the contract. I would move for approval.
Okay.
So here.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we approved this item for allowing the use of the building, entering into contract with these agencies, and then allow me to work out the final issues with the occupancy of, the issue of liability. Is there any public comment on the matter? Okay, seeing none, I move that we, I mean, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion passes. The, as a courtesy to one of our elected officials, if you'll bear with me, I will ask that the county attorney and the district attorney have an item on here that is regarding the approval of the, of a new technology for police departments to submit, this is a critical, all my years in the court, it's one of the most risk areas for DA or any prosecutor, if they don't have good control of the day, of the arresting information, and be able to transfer that to the, transfer that quickly to the defendants as required by law, so, do you want to start, or do you want me to introduce the item? Let me, let me call the item, I'm trying to find it, can somebody help me?
Which one is it?
The iCrime and Cold Storage, do you see that on there?
In contracts, it's 26...
Thank you. All right, so I called item number 26, discuss and consider and take appropriate action regarding contracts, agreements, and grants to be approved or ratified, and this is the contract for subscription at, at SCENE LLC for iCrime software and iCrime cold storage for the Burnett County District Attorney, and same for the Burnett County Attorney's Office, so.
First of all, good, good morning, gentlemen, how are y'all?
Good morning.
Eddie Erdondo, the county attorney.
Perry Thomas, the district attorney.
All right, this is all kind of connected to the system that the county is using countywide, it's called Odyssey. And Odyssey, from time to time, starts having updates and changes, and Odyssey notified the county that they were going to start making some changes that was going to affect our office's ability to provide our evidence to the defense, that we are held on a very high standards, that we need to make sure that the defense bar receives every small piece of evidence that there is, and it tracks this digitally. This system, we notified, where we were notified by the Odyssey folks, that that was going to go away and be replaced, okay? And when we first talked to Odyssey, Odyssey says, well, we're going to, we're going to come up with a new version of this, but it's going to cost y'all $80,000 a year, and it's going to take us four or five months to develop this, okay? So, our two offices got together, and we started searching for other viable programs that were out there that could get the job done, and hopefully at a lot, a lot less cost. And we did, we found a program, it's called iCrime, okay? And both, this has been fully vetted by the two offices, we've met exhaustively with these individuals, and the good news is that the cost is tremendously less, I think we're estimating a total cost a year of 24, 25,000 instead of 80, and then, and then Odyssey later found out what we were doing, and it kind of came down a little bit, they, they came down to like 53. But here we are at 25 or so, and this is for four, for four agreements, two per department, one is for the use of their licensing software that will be able to track, and so that we can give our discovery to the defense bar without any issues. Number two, it corrects an issue that we've been having, in that it allows for one depository of all the evidence coming in from the different agencies, instead of the way we've been doing it, one agency does it one way, another agency does it a different way, so this is going to streamline things, so we expect this to be a big improvement to both offices. And then, the other contract, it has to do with the storage of, you know, of the information, and there's a small fee for that. But in total, you're talking about $25,000 instead of what was originally quoted with the Odyssey folks of 80,000 a year, so, pass that on to you.
Well, we don't have much more to add to that, other than it is less than half the cost of what the Odyssey folks have quoted us, and I think it will correct some issues, make it a bit more efficient within our offices in order to be able to get in evidence and then get it out, particularly when it comes to videos, now every, every crime incident now has many, many videos involved in it, it's become a huge burden on both of our offices to get all these videos out to the defense. This system will allow us to hopefully electronically be able to transfer those videos to defense, help us comply with the law. So, we think this is our, this is our best choice this time, and so that's why we've come forward to court, to ask the court's approval in approving this, this system.
Thank you very much. So I, thank you for inviting me to sit in on some of the sessions, I know I was late a couple times, but I got in there and saw, so, and I appreciate your working, and it looks like a really good system that's going to quickly integrate your offices in the sense that felonies and misdemeanors will be treated the same when they're co-occurring, so that, it looks like they answered all the questions regarding that, the vendor did, so that's exciting to see this. Some of you, that if you've been around here for a while, you heard the story about Michael Morton spent 26 years in, in prison, and it was basically because the, the defense attorney didn't have some critical pieces of evidence, this is what this is to prevent, to, because that ended up being millions of dollars paid out by, by state and local governments to compensate him for his 26 years. So, we're spending a little bit of money to make sure we do things right, and in accordance with the law, and we're grateful for you guys making sure that we have this opportunity to do it right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay. Okay, so are there any questions from the Commissioners?
Just from a budgetary impact, is there an overlap, and we have to fund some funds, or is this...
No, this is, this is within their departmental budgets.
Actually, it's, Odyssey's paid by the county, so it's, it's, it's through the IT Department.
That's correct.
And I think our auditor here can answer about funds.
The funding source will be 100-5040-4540, which currently has $97,181 in it. It is a possibility that with purchasing this out of that funding source, we might need to move a little bit of money from IT professional services down into the license, support and license fee line item later on in the year, but we did budget some excess in professional services, because we had a need to replace switches across the county. We did get a, a grant for those switches, which has allowed us to have some excess funding in our IT budget to fund this project.
Okay, great, thank you, wonderful question. Anything else?
I'd move for approval.
Okay, it moved for approval, is there a second?
No, I'm assuming that's items E and F.
That's correct, E and F, I'm sorry.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all right, is there any public comment? Okay.
I just want to be clear on the funding, you mentioned the county has a budget for some switches, but the jail just had to pay for one of its own switches because there wasn't enough money in the amount that was for the switches, so if we had to pay for that out of our funds, because that account didn't have enough money to cover the county Odyssey switches, which, which is correct.
Just want to clarify, is this public comment, or is this, this a department input?
Department input, because I'm aware of the, the payment of the, of the sheriff's office portion of it.
Okay, all right, do you have an answer to that?
I know we have a grant for switches, and so all switches that were approved under the grant, that would be more of an IT question, what, why the switch wasn't covered under the grant.
Okay, all right, we may have to take that up later.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you moved, and it was seconded?
No, Jim moved, motioned and I seconded.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Then, okay, so it's been moved and seconded, is there any public comment, additional public comment? Okay, all right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Thank you for that, and thank you, Mr. Thomas. Get back to prosecuting those criminals. Let me make a quick note, please. All right, so, number 11, I'm sorry, I already did 11, excuse me. Number 12, discuss, consider, and take appropriate action regarding the amended bylaws to establish the Central Texas Spaceport Development Corporation with Williamson County, Texas, in accordance with the Local Government Code 507 and the Nonprofit Corporations Act of Chapter 22 of the Texas Business Organization Code. So, on this item, I guess we've had it on the agenda once already, we've had a public workshop, I'm not sure where to go from here, I know there's some concern throughout the community about what the impact is and how, how it fits into Firefly, Firefly's here, doesn't matter what, what we, what we're going to do, they're our taxpayer, our neighbor, our property owners. The reality is, I don't, I don't know how to move forward on this with, I don't think we need another presentation or demonstration of anything, so, I'll just put it, put it to the Commissioners' Court, how do you, how do you want to move forward?
I mean, I can relay constituent feedback that I got all day yesterday, and then some. The Briggs area, which I represent, of course, there's not, it's about 99% negative impact, our feedback from, from this, for various reasons, eminent domain being number one, number two being the balance of power between Williamson County and Burnett County, and then Firefly. So, based on, you know, I guess to say it, representative government, the folks I'm representing are loudly screaming no right now, as we learn more about it and get educated on it, I'm, you know, I'd like to educate folks and myself, and I don't think this is, there are some good aspects of this for infrastructure and things like that, but the negatives outweigh those at this time, so, I guess, call that an update from constituents that I talked to, if, I don't know how you're...
Well, at, at this point, this is, this is an action posted for, or an agenda item posted for action, and so if... posted for action, and so if no one wants to bring forth a motion, then it's just gonna sit here. There's, there's, under Roberts' Rules of Order, there's several, several items that can take place. We can just not take it up. We can table it to a specific time, which means that, you know, that it'll come up at some point in the future and we'll deal with it then to another, you know, we can say the, you know, second meeting of, of May or, or whatever. It can be scheduled for a workshop or, so, so number one is, it can be tabled to a specific time. Number two, you can bring a motion now and, and we'll, we'll deal with it now and take public comment and resolve the issue. Or we can just pass on the agenda item overall and it, and, and we will have to pass under Roberts' Rules of Order if, if no one makes a motion. So it'll be no public comment and no, no discussion, it'll just stop. So do I hear a motion? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on to agenda item number thirteen. Discuss and consider and take appropriate action regarding the resolution in opposition to the proposed construction and operation of a new rail line by the Texas Materials Group, Inc. And so in this, in this matter, we will, I, I have prepared a draft resolution, it does not have to. We don't have to necessarily use this, or we can craft some additional language, or people can make additional recommendations to this resolution. I know, before I read the whole thing, I, I, I'm getting tired of reading resolutions, but they're good resolutions, the ones we've done, but this one might be a little long. So basically what this is saying, it's laying in the Surface Transportation Board Office of Environmental Assessment, right? E-O-E-A? Office of Environmental Assessment. Excuse me, these federal, people were throwing around a lot of jargon or what do you call it, the?
Acronyms.
Acronyms the last couple days, so my head's a little spinning. I thought, I thought when I worked for TDCJ, I, I thought I'd really had the place of acronyms, but this, this, Fed's even got this beat. So in this case, there's a proposed rail line. This resolution is, I went through the federal statute and looked at the reasons that they would consider, the reasons that they would consider as part of their environmental assessment. I've identified some things that, comments that came in to us about this situation. And so I've drafted, based on their guidelines and public input that we've received so far, a resolution in opposition of the proposed rail line. So I know we have a public workshop tonight, so we have to decide, so the, the comments under the federal guideline are due on April fourteenth. And so I've printed off the copy of the, the online submission form. If we adopt this resolution, then we will.
You'll submit it.
I will fill it out and submit it online as a, as a hard copy or whatever, scanned copy of, of this resolution. So, so first off, I guess we need a motion if we're, want to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt this resolution.
Okay.
Second.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution in opposition of the rail line proposed by Texas Materials and submit this comment to the Texas, I'm sorry, the Federal Surface Transportation Board Office of Environmental Analysis. So, so do you want me to read the resolution for the record? Okay.
You just went challenging today.
This is resolution day.
You'll be fine.
I am resolved. Resolution, Burnett County Commissioners Court, in opposition to the proposed construction and operation of a new rail line by the Texas Materials Group, Inc. Whereas on March fourth, twenty twenty-five, Burnett County was notified by the Surface Transportation Boards, the Board, Office of Environmental Analysis, OEA, of the proposed twenty-six point nine mile rail, railroad line across Burnett and Lampasses Counties. Whereas Texas Materials Group, Inc., Texas Materials, docket number FD three six eight one five, is planning to seek authority from the Board to construct and operate a new rail line in Burnett and Lampasses Counties, Texas. Whereas the Texas Material plans to assist in the transportation of aggregate material mined in the local area and is, and is proposed to link the Austin Western Railroad, AWRR, in the vicinity of the city of Burnett to the BNSF Railroad in the vicinity of Lampasses. Whereas the rail line would involve the reconstruction of track on the right-of-way of previously abandoned rail line and the construction of track on a new right-of-way. Whereas the OEA will prepare an environmental document that evaluates the potential environmental impacts of the proposed rail construction and operation and has thus requested comments and concerns to be provided by Burnett County. Whereas Burnett County has identified how the proposed rail construction and operation will negatively impact the environment and well-being of Burnett County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Burnett County Commissioners Court, opposes the construction of the proposed railroad line project for the following reasons. One, detrimental effects to the proposed action on the human environment. Two, detrimental effect of the proposed actions of public safety in rural communities by increasing the risk of accidents at crossing and increasing emergency response times. Three, detrimental effect of the proposed action on prime agriculture land. Four, the constant use of common carrier laws without any federal strategic plan results in the corporation, in, in any corporation taking any property without fully just compensation. Five, detrimental effect on several riparian areas of the most significant being the Russell Fork of the San Gabriel River. Six, detrimental effects on the groundwater fed by the luvial of the San Gabriel and its tributaries. Seven, detrimental effects of the historical ranches and families working to achieve their historical designation. Eight, failure to proposed action to consider alternative routes, including the consideration of a no-build alternative. Nine, failure of the proposed action to commit to excluding the transportation of hazardous materials, transportation from the proposal. In other words, removing that from, further, Burnett County further believes that the construction and operation of this new rail line in Burnett will be detrimental to the well-being and safety of the community. Residents choose to live in Burnett County for its peaceful rural character and presence of, and the presence of this proposed rail line could severely alter the life citizens and property owners spent their entire lives inquiring. Further, the Burnett County judge is directed to submit this resolution to the Board and the OEA before fourteenth of April, twenty twenty-five. Further, the Burnett County judge is directed to request that the Board and the OEA conduct a full and thorough review of the application submitted by Texas Materials and to provide notification of any actions occurring with this or any related filings. Great, thank you. Are there?
You passed your auctioneering test.
Oh, good. I can't wait to get in that line. That's my post-judge work, I guess. So any, any comments, any questions, any additions?
No, not to that. Can I speak to the public hearing tonight real quick?
Sure.
So tonight we'll have a public hearing at Hill Country Fellowship at six o'clock. It's a joint workshop, so that way the Commissioners can attend if they want. It's joint with Lampasses County. They have affected landowners as well, we're trying to work in step with them on, on how this process works. We'll have information for landowners and area residents on what this process looks like from now until either an approval or denial, or an approval with conditions. We, we had a Zoom yesterday with STB, Judge and I did, the Surface Transportation Board. This is quite a long process, it's quite a thorough process. So we'll have that laid out tonight, we'll have some ways that when public comment opens up, the April fourteenth deadline that he talked about was for our comments as government entities, tribes and things like that. And then we'll have more opportunities as an entity to continue to comment throughout the process, but the public will have up to two opportunities for the same process and public comment. So one of the goals tonight is to pass that information on how landowners can draft and craft those public comments to be effective and meaningful and specific to their properties. And, and start giving them the tools to do that, cause that's what it's gonna take. It, it'll come straight from them. Those public comments are all a public record on their website. I will say, they did mention that they do re-tack, redact sensitive information if you have historical or archaeological uniquenesses on your property. Those are some things you want the public to know sometimes. And so we're gonna warn people that when they do that, not to get up and public comment and, and say those things, that you can send them to the Transportation Board, but then they are, they try their best to redact that sensitive information because, I mean, the truth is, people will try to come find that stuff sometimes. So you wanna protect yourself. So educating the public tonight, is there anything else? I think as far as the goals of tonight, well, we will allow for public comment and allow folks to talk about what they wanna talk about. Texas Materials, we've met with them also, they will not be at the meeting, but I can tell you that if, we're gonna try to stream it, it's, as long as we don't have technical difficulties, I've worked with the church on getting that done. So it'll be on our Burnett County YouTube page if all goes well, and I'm pretty sure they'll be listening. So with that, I'd like to see y'all at Hill Country tonight at six.
Was Texas Materials invited to attend the workshop?
Oh, they were, yes. When, at the meeting, we invited them, they said they.
So they declined?
They declined, but they said they'd be listening and then they, so FYI. So that's why, any sensitive information, we just need to be careful about in a public setting, you know, we don't wanna just be aware of that, so.
Okay, is there any public comment on this issue?
I'm Patti K, Burnett County voter, taxpayer. Is it just public comments or is there questions and answers?
For this, for right now?
For tonight.
Oh, that's just kind of a free-for-all.
So will, will people be able to get answers to questions?
I don't know. We, we, we know what we know from reading, I've read the federal guidelines, I've read, you know, I'll do my best to answer what I can from what I've read, but I.
Okay, so you will be providing what answers you have?
Yeah.
It won't just be public comments that are not having any deliberation or dialogue back and forth?
It's, it's a, it's a, it's listed as a workshop so that we can, so we can all attend to listen to the constituents about what their concerns with the rail line.
So who's hosting? There's gonna be a panel?
It's gonna, I'm, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, the workshop to order, the public can, we, we're gonna have some sort of agenda that Damon and I are working on, but the thing is, we can't really, we don't have any, we don't have any action that we can take other than, this is the only action right now by law that we can take is, is to notify the Surface Transportation Board Office of Environmental Assessment that we have received their information and we have submitted to them. Now, there's not a public comment until much later in the project, for the public to be able to speak to the federal agency. This is the only shot we have right now. Lampasses is also calling a joint workshop with us and they'll be there to do our best to answer whatever questions we know, but we're not the, we're not the instigator of the rail line, nor are we the federal agency responsible for controlling what happens with this rail line.
So the people who will be on the panel will be able to answer questions tonight, whatever answers they have?
The best we can, whatever, the best we can, I, I think so. Okay.
Claire Nibro again, just have a brief comment to thank each and every one of you for standing in support of this. I, I, I'm assuming, of course, that you all are gonna vote this resolution in, and I thank you for looking out for the citizens of Burnett County, that's very important and I'm glad you're doing it. Can I just ask a question as to who drafted this resolution? Just curious.
Well, Damon and I worked on it together, so.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
He, he started, I finished. Yeah. We're gonna take a five-minute recess, please, and so it's now nine twenty. Ten twenty. Man, see, I got long glasses and short glasses, now I, I don't have any of one of them. All right. Oh, you wanna vote on that? Okay, I apologize. Okay, sorry, hold on, we're just gonna go ahead and vote on this and then, and then we'll go forward. All right, all those in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Five-minute recess at ten twenty-one. 32, I call the meeting back to order, and we've just passed... We're in railroads, or at least this one railroad, number 14. Is that where y'all show I am now?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Calling item number 14. Discuss, consider, and take appropriate action, naming Burnet County Judge Brian Wilson as the authorized official for all e-grants. I did go take a time, go look at the Texas Administrative Code in the governor's office, and that is the appropriate action that at a... I guess it was in January, it was assigned to Commissioner Dockery, and so it needs to come back to me now that there's a judge that I can go online, get my registration and sign all the e-grants online.
Move for approval.
Moved and seconded that we sign this to me. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Jim.
Jim.
Thank you. All right. Number 15. Discuss, consider, and take appropriate action for a request for a replat of Lot 6, Sycamore Falls Estates, to be known as Lots 6A and 6B, Sycamore Falls Estate, a division of lot, of one lot into two. Sycamore Falls, it sounds like a lovely place.
It is. It's really a pretty place down in Precinct 3. It's kind of tucked away back in the draw. It's a beautiful place. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, members of the public, Herb Darling, Burnet County Development Services. We've got a request to replat Lot 6 and divide it into two lots. Now, generally, the court frowns on divisions, but these are extra-large lots out there in Sycamore Falls. The resulting lot size is 6A will be 19.44 acres and 6B will be 27.338 acres.
I'll move for approval.
Second? Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the division of Lot 6A and 6B in Sycamore Falls. Is there any public comment? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Number 15. Discuss, consider, and take appropriate action for a request for a replat... Wait.
16.
I'm sorry, 16. Excuse me. Discuss... I've checked the wrong thing. I'm going to have to start wearing these glasses, dang. Discuss and consider and take appropriate action for replat of Lots 204 and 205, Enchanted Valley, Section 1, to be known as Lots 204A and 205A. Enchanted Valley, Section 1, adjustment of a lot line between neighbors.
And Judge, that's basically what it says. Enchanted Valley is an older subdivision located on the Colorado arm of Lake LBJ. These are off-water lots, neighbors across street, neighboring lots, and they're just going to adjust. I think it's even less than six feet that they're moving the lot line.
Okay. So, we're just bringing where the fence is or the property is between two neighbors?
I'm sure somebody once upon a time might have built a shed or a building or a fence that probably wasn't exactly on the lot line, and so now they're adjusting it out.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Move for approval.
All right.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve this change in Enchanted Valley. Is there any discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay. 16. Number 17. Discuss, consider, and take appropriate action regarding a replat request for Lot 10 through 13, Cassie subdivision Block 15, to be known as Lot 10A. Cassie subdivision Block 15, a combination of four lots into one.
It's a good old combination of four into one. It's a common owner that wishes to combine all four lots into one common lot.
Okay. And there's no... I mean, it's just... Facilitates the taxing and things like that, but there's no other change?
Building septic, stuff like that.
Oh, good.
Cassie being a little older subdivision gives them room to build a bigger house or apertices that go with the house, the septic that time.
All right. Thank you.
Move for approval.
All right.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve this lot in Cassie subdivision. Is there any discussion? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Number 17. Check. Number 18. Discuss and consider, discuss, consider, and take appropriate action regarding a request for replat of the community center Quartz Park and the parks, park lots, as shown on the Clearwater Landing at LBJ, number 1.5, to be known as the Community Center Track, and lots 73 and 74, Clearwater Landing, plat number 1.9, creating three lots out of two.
Save the best one for the last. What we've got, Judge, Commissioners, the POA wishes to generate some funds. They have a park portion, multiple parks, I believe it was three different parks. They had a community park, Quartz Park, and then a lot, V Park. So, what they are doing, they have their amenities, I believe a pool, a tennis, pickleball court. They're separating that out and keeping it as a community center tract, and then they're creating two lots that will be for sale to the general public to raise funds for the POA.
Okay. And POA is a property owners' association?
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
Acronyms.
There you go. And then, and because these are fairly small lots, they're right on the lake or on the edge of, on the edge of, close to water, they do have septic and sewer already addressed?
Kingsland Water Supply came up for this particular development.
So, they have a mud to deal with the wastewater, and then they have water available?
Yes.
So, we don't have the same constrictions that we would have in a lot of other parts of the county?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Darling. Is there any...
Move for approval.
Okay. All right. It's been moved and seconded that this...
Replay.
The Quartz Park, replat on Quartz Park be approved. Is there any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay. Discuss, consider...
Thank you, Judge.
Discuss and consider and take appropriate action regarding the burn ban for the unincorporated areas of Burnet County, Texas. So, Derek, you want to come up and just give us a real high-level assessment right now, please?
Derek County, Burnet County Office of Emergency Management. Good morning. So...
Are you at least partly responsible for the lack of rain that we've had over the last two or three weeks?
I'm pretty sure God's tired of hearing my prayers for rain at this point.
Okay. All right. So, it's not you? I'm glad to see that.
No. I want rain because I want to make sure that, you know, I have a day off. Over the last month, I haven't had too many of those. I've had to work in some capacity on weekends. But anyways, no. So, currently, the Keach Byram Drought Index is at about a 487. Of course, just updated here about a half hour ago. So, we're still up there. Of course, on the drought conditions, of course, we're still looking at, you know, on the U.S. Drought Monitor, looking at, you know, vast majority, about 70% of the county being under the third level, which is the second highest level of drought. So, that's extreme drought, with exceptional drought poking up into southern portions of our county.
Can I just back up one?
Yes, sir.
So, you said that the current drought assessment number is 487?
Yes, for the Keach Byram Drought Index.
And that's after this last quarter-inch rain?
Yes, sir.
Although a few places got a little bit more. It was basically about a quarter inch, one-third of an inch across the county. So, and although it's not law, as I understand it, we have been generally using 450 as our threshold. Is that...
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Okay. Thank you. Go ahead and proceed.
So, I did go ahead and take a look at, you know, the other counties that have burn bans around us and what their average numbers are, and counties that have burn bans in effect around us, especially being Blanco and Lano County counties, you know, their KPI average is 432 and 428. You know, Williamson County, they have a burn ban still in effect. That's... Theirs is 441. The thing is, is like even though these numbers, it's a good short-term observation, we have very high levels of underlying drought. The greenness that we're seeing is just pulling up a little bit of water that's in the soil. And just to give an idea of, you know, how fragile a situation we're in, tomorrow, we're going to see relative humidity values in the low 20s, low 20% range, winds in the 20 to 30 mile an hour range, bringing us into, you know, very high on the fire danger categories. So, like I say, it just takes one bad day to put us in a really bad situation. I know people want to burn. There's people out there that have, you know, 20-foot by 6-foot high piles that need to be burned, but right now, we're still in a mix of some of these dead drought-cured fuels that, you know, have been sitting around here for the last six months.
So, I don't really want you to go too far out on a limb, but what's your professional assessment of the situation as far as lifting or not lifting? You don't... You're not making the decision?
Of course.
Just asking for your assessment.
Like I say, in consultation with Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, our regional fire coordinator, as well as many of the chiefs in the unincorporated areas of the county, fire chiefs, we're, like I say, we would say no. We shouldn't lift it.
Ask. No. Okay. All right. So, any other questions?
Where are we in the timeline of the existing ban?
Oh, we've still got through, so you're March, April, May. So, it'll be May, early May.
Is that the expiration? It would expire? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. 90 days.
Thank you. Making sure I understood what...
I'm sorry. I couldn't tell if you're looking at me or council. I'm sorry.
What options do we have, like Lano, I think where they did a temporary lift?
So, I've been pondering that one. So, of course, you know, according to 352.082, that's local government code, it takes the court to put it on. It could be the judge or the court to take it off. But I think through an agreement, so technically, we could lift it, but then we'd have to have a special session to put it on or put it back on, at least by the letter of the law.
Even if it's a deadline like they did?
Well, that would essentially be the deadline because we would know that we're putting it back on, so it'd be another order written up to put it back on, on that, you know, that time that we're saying, and we could all, we could actually do it all at the same time, just say we're going to lift it, and then it'll be back on.
Similar to, I think that was Lano. Oh, really? Okay. Or Lampasis.
Yeah, if we...
Yeah, Lampasis is going back on on Friday.
When they got that rain, they did a two-day lift back on on Monday.
They lifted it over the weekend.
So, I don't know how they did it procedurally or however, but that's how they did it, and that made sense in that case.
Because we do have another chance of rain, and I can say that it's beyond the official forecast right now, so it's all conjecture, but late next week, we might have another opportunity for rain.
Let's just walk through the options. I mean, I will say for the record that I went out on Thursday night, I saw a star, and I said, "I wish I might, I wish I might waive the burn ban tonight," but it didn't work for me. So, the option is, right now, we could go ahead and vote to lift the burn ban, and then it's just for, it's just off until such time as we have a special meeting, or then, I think, I think you explained to me that I could call a, I could put the burn ban on. Is that correct?
So, if we did a special session.
And then we had three days to get a Commissioners Court meeting. Is that...
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, without, without an emergency declaration?
Yes.
I could just put the burn ban on without an emergency declaration?
Yes, sir.
So, just, so number one... So, just, so number one is, we can just lift it, and it's just off. Number two is, we can lift it, but I'll be ready to put it back on as long as we understand that we'd have a meeting in three days. And then, then what Commissioner Collier just said is, and I believe you kind of mentioned, we might be able to go ahead and lift it today and put it back on Friday, so people can burn for whatever, three days.
I mean, we could, that is an option.
But we got low humidity and high winds coming the next three days, is the forecast?
Yes.
Is the forecast? Okay, so...
I was saying, if we get some rain in the next week, over a weekend, can we, how much trouble is it to lift it and put it right back on like they did?
So...
Basically give somebody three days?
So we could, we could come in in a special session, say next Thursday, because we know we're going to have rain, well, just as an option. So we could come in and say, okay, we're going to lift it today, but we could go ahead and sign an order putting it back on on Monday at, you know, noon or eight AM, whatever the case is. So we can go ahead and sign the order, just because we signed the order today doesn't mean it goes in effect today. So we could write the order so that, you know, of putting the burn ban back on, so that it has a certain date that it goes back on. Maybe that'd be two, three, four days in the future.
So that going back on does not make court action at that date, is my question. Do we know?
So, like I say, the way I see it, if we were to, say we come in, like I say, we'll just use that scenario again. So we come in next Thursday, we know we're going to get rain, we do a special session for that day to lift the burn ban. At the same time, we have another item to reinstate the burn ban, say on that following Monday. So it'll be, so we just write the criteria so that when we sign it, it goes into effect on that following Monday, whatever that date is.
But we're kind of gambling on it raining?
Exactly.
If it doesn't rain, then what do we do?
Then we wait. But that would be, I would say only do that if we know we have a pretty well guaranteed. So, like I say, that official forecast hasn't come out yet. Official forecast is only for seven days. So that would be something that we will be able to tell on Monday or Tuesday, which will put us in that timeframe to be able to put a meeting on for that Saturday, well, for that weekend, so we can put it on for, you know, Monday or Tuesday, we'll be able to do it on Thursday or Friday for a special meeting.
That timeline is getting complicated, man.
I was gonna say, or, if it does rain, he can put a burn ban on, and then we can meet within three days later to ratify it, is that correct?
That's what I, that's what I hope. We can, we can lift it right now.
Well, now, I'm saying...
Go ahead.
If it rains, maybe...
We move on today, you can lift it at any time.
That's correct. That's correct. I don't, according to what I understand?
Yes.
With legal counsel, I can lift the burn ban at any time, if I can get a hold of the sentence. Which she's accomplishing. So I'll say that, I'm sorry, I've got away from my microphone. I can lift the burn ban as county judge at any time, so if we leave the burn ban on today, get through this dry, the high wind and low humidity, and it turns off any time in the next week, week and a half, I can pull the burn ban of my own accord, we don't have to meet.
Right.
So, okay.
I know as of today, the precinct two fire chiefs all agree that we should leave the burn ban on because of the low humidity, the high winds. However, the overwhelming number of social media experts out there...
Oh, yes.
Just want you to know that.
No, I definitely get that, I know you've probably been getting the phone calls, because I know I've actually received a few of them, not from this rain event, but from the last rain event, so.
Anyway, okay, so commissioners, any motions or just move forward? All right, there's a motion coming forward, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, call item number twenty, discuss, consider and taking appropriate action regarding budget, I'm sorry.
No action.
There was no action taken, there's nothing going to be happening, we're passing on the agenda item, there's no, no motion and no, on the burn ban.
Burn ban stays.
Burn ban will stay in place.
Burn ban stays in place. Pray for rain, pray for rain, that's right. But at such time we get sufficient rain, I, you know, I'll use my opportunity, I'll get with our emergency management coordinator and get it lifted as quickly as I can, so. Let's see, where was I? Twenty, discuss, consider and take appropriate action regarding the budget entered departmental line item transfers. Item auditor.
We had a couple line item transfers that came in after the agenda was posted. We have $1,030 transferring from professional services to conference dues and training in the IT department, and we have $10,000 transferring from operating supplies to vehicle equipment repairs and maintenance in Road and Bridge number one.
Move for approval of the line item transfers, including the two additions.
Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the departmental line item transfers. Is there any discussion? Is there any public comment? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, the budget amendments are approved. Twenty-one is the discuss, consider and take appropriate action for the authorization of payment of claims previously approved by the county auditor. So Karen, I just want to make sure, these are both the prepaid claims that are authorized under the commissioners' court or by state law, as well as the ones that you posted since ready to pay?
Yes, it's payroll, accounts payable, as well as the prepaid claims.
Okay, thank you. And so these are all, these are all done, commissioners, I just want to remind, and also for the public, that these are all done by properly obligated resources, following our, the commissioners' court budget process. And so, so I'm, do I hear a motion?
Vote for approval.
Okay. Any second.
So here.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the payments authorized by the county auditor, is there any public comment? Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We're at twenty...
Twenty-two.
Two. Just getting there. All right, discuss and consider and take appropriate action regarding the FY25 budget amendments. Okay, this is a request by precinct three to move some money in, from operating, into operating supplies, excuse me, is that, that's correct, move it to operating supplies?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions, any additional information? Okay, so, just, I'll take, consider a motion?
Move for approval.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we, that we approve this line item transfer, is there any public comment? Okay, hearing none, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Okay, discuss and, we don't have any asset transfers, right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so we're going to pass on number twenty-three, we don't have any asset transfers today. Now we're going to acknowledge number twenty-five, acknowledgement of different reports, I've received Marble Falls EMS audit, TCEQ, about statewide general permit, about discharge in the local waterways, a central state's water resource rate increase, which would affect these four communities, Cassie, Council Creek, Deer Springs, and Silver Creek. We don't have any water supply in that area, but they, this private company that I think LCRA sold, sold several years ago, will be facing increases, and so we're acknowledging that we recognize that they're going to raise the rates, but we don't have at this time any, any input to provide, but the citizens in that, in that area would have been notified. The Burnett Fire Department response times over the quarter two are attached, running about thirteen minutes in this, in this area, so they got down to 12.4, something like that, a few weeks ago, but this, just letting us know for our information and to communicate out to the citizens as part of this public record. I don't think this needs to be...
No action.
No action, so...
Judge, you skipped twenty-four, I believe.
Oh, did I? Sorry. Oh, number twenty-four, I, I'm sorry, I had written on here skip, I just thought y'all hadn't written. So Judge Henson has said that he'd like to do this later when we do a budget workshop and work together with the other courts at the same time, so...
No action.
No action needed on that one. Okay, so we, coming back to twenty-six, I know we've already taken care of E and F, but I'd like to go ahead and probably, I don't see anything on here that might be a conflict, so I'd like to just take number twenty-six as a group, unless there's some objection. I will say that I used to be the director of MVCPA, I have looked at the state law and ethics rules regarding the motor vehicle crime prevention authority and my role, I've been gone longer than two years, it's not a regulatory agency, and so I have no affiliation and have had no affiliation for more than two years, so I'm well outside of the time period. So I'm not going to recuse myself because I have no vested interest in that agency anymore, and no influence. So discuss and consider and take appropriate, I'm calling number twenty-six, discuss and consider and take appropriate action regarding contracts, agreements, or grants to be approved by or ratified. Facility rental agreement with the city of Burnett for the employee picnic, no fees associated with this rental. The approval to apply and sign the resolution for FY26 Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority grant for the Heart of Texas Auto Theft Task Force. See contract agreement with, from, between DIJ Construction in Burnett County regarding 1,300 feet of striping on County Road 422, an amount not to exceed $1,600, and an independent contract agreement driver for veterans transportation between Burnett County and Peter Bird. Is there a motion on these items?
I'll move for approval.
Okay, it's been moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded for approval, is there any public comment on this issue, any of these issues? Is there any discussion, commissioners? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, I, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes, all of these are approved. Number twenty-seven, discuss, consider and take appropriate action concerning calling for bids and bid openings, requested for proposals, qualifications, and related openings. A, award rebid 25-6100-04 for cold mix. B, award rebid 25610005 for black base.
Good morning, Judge and commissioners, Megan Schuman, Burnett County Auditor's office. So we had our bid openings for these two bids on April the second at two and 2:30, and we did receive three responses for both of them. I will start with the cold mix first, we received asphalt ink, and they bid FOB plant $82, FOB delivered $98. Brontex $62 FOB plant, and then $87 FOB delivered. And Texas Materials FOB plant 100, and FOB delivered 108. And those are also going to be the same prices and same respondents for the black base as well.
Our backup material does not have the amounts on it.
Did you have a handout?
Yes, is there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Were they the same bids for both of them? Same money-wise?
Yes, they were the same FOB plant and FOB delivered dollar amount responses, yes.
Yeah, it's the same, right?
This is hot, that's cool.
Just in different order.
But they're the same. The prices are the same.
Okay.
That's when we pick it up, and that's when they deliver it. She put them in different order? They're just not in the same order?
Sorry.
Yeah, they were, that's just how they were opened, sorry.
No, the lowest bidder on both is Brontex $62 at the plant and $87 delivered for both.
And we've checked on that location, and that will come out of there?
Yes, New Braunfels location. But they did say that they've done business with us in the past and can get the material here in timely manners, so...
We've never had a problem with them. I move to accept the lowest bid from Brontex Materials.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we have accepted the low bid on Brontex materials for the items listed in the, in the requests, so is there, is there any public comment? Is there any discussion among the commissioners? Okay, hearing none, I call, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I have one question for the auditor, how quick can we get a PO?
Right after court.
Thank you. The guys are chomping.
Yeah, please send her a picture.
Thank you. Megan, thank you for your time doing this.
Okay. All right, last item for agenda is a calendar review. Got a lot of things going on right now.
Yeah.
So what I was asking, Jim, thank you for coordinating the invocation for this month, and I hope you'll do it the next, next meeting, and then for the month of May, I've asked Commissioner Collier, and then if you would do June, I would appreciate it for...
June.
June, uh-huh, great. And then that way we can go ahead and arrange the invocation, you can either invite somebody or pray yourself, either way. I do want to mention that this week is the last week for our wonderful county auditor. I just really appreciate working with you over the years, and then more recently here, but the, thank you, thank you for all you've done for this county, so.
Thank you so much, I have been so honored to be able to serve in one of the finest counties in the entire state of Texas, and I really appreciate this court and everyone, all the citizens in Burnett County.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
On calendar review, the Central Texas Groundwater Conservation District is going to host a stakeholder input workshop and presentation April 22nd at two o'clock at the O'Callaghan Community Center. They're going to talk about the water study that's been, being compiled over the last few years that we cooperated with and the payment of, and Antara will be there, so they're going to go over what the water in that area looks like and start conversations with residents out there.
Now, this is, I attended the last groundwater board meeting, I just want to make sure this is to begin, starting to the discussion of having a specialized district within our district, is that correct, or a special?
It's the very, to start that conversation.
Okay.
No decisions to be made.
I understand, right, I just want to make sure that this is...
Just give me information.
There's consideration for the groundwater district to create a special district within the groundwater area, and we want to make sure, pay attention to what that means, if it's more restrictive, less restrictive, I don't know, but I just, people in that area should pay attention to what that means. Anything else for the calendar?
Four twenty-six.
Thank you. Four twenty-six, and that's here in Burnett, out there at the Resource Center, whatever that's called.
Recycling.
Recycling Center.
Recycling and reuse center.
Okay, good. All right, out there on 963, just three, four miles out there.
Twenty-four, twenty-one.
There you go, you have all the answers. Anything else? Okay, if that's, if that's it, I guess, I guess we're going to have a Bluebonnet Festival coming up sometime.
Oh, that's this weekend?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. And then we have the workshop tonight. Anything else? Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, we'll do this by general consent, meeting's adjourned, thank you.
You two approach.
Yes, go ahead. Hold on.